...as it is in heaven. Tonight, our prayer is all the business transacted here would be according to your will, Lord. Father, what you want done in our nation, what you want done in our county, what you want done in our community is the most important thing that we could know about. So, Lord, I ask that each of these members and our community be in agreement with your will to do what you want done, when you want done, and that we'll put aside our own personal purposes and things that we want and make what we want, what you want. So I ask tonight, Lord, that by your Holy Spirit to guide everyone here to speak what is on your mind, that we might move forward to do your will on earth as it is in heaven. In your name use us, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Lord. At this time, I'll have Todd Crockett, an Air Force veteran, if he will leave some legs and play. Come in now.
Uh, please, first, please. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, and I appreciate everyone being here tonight. At this time, it's time for our roll call, so if you'll take a look at that. Next, we have three commissioners out tonight throughout town. Out of five on the agenda approval, I've got some changes to that going down under Act F. I'm taking that off the table. Eighty-eight grievance committee, we will house some new members reporting in January tonight, so taking off Act F. Add in place of Act F, the industrial board with the members that will be named tonight to that. So adding Act F, industrial board. Okay? Then down to ten, deleting Resolution E on amendment, or on the resolution, we need to have a public meeting on that in January, so we'll take that off the table. That's where you want to take down on that. So that'll be referred to the January meeting. Deleting ten E. And then after twelve, we'll be adding ten A session for attorney-client closed session, and we'll recess at that time to go into conference room one. And still some picks back there, if y'all want that later, but we will add that after twelve, attorney-client closed session. Okay? With those changes, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as, as, uh, me?
I have a motion that it could be, I hear that maybe, um...
Thank you. Motion by Robert Mueller, second by Jackie Hunt. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. And our three commissioners, perhaps, if they were out on business for a particular thing, not be here tonight. Thank you. Out of six, review and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Chair recognizes Dwight Miller.
I approve. We motion to approve the agenda with the provision of adding in the clarity of page four under paragraph four, what option one was.
You want to thought of the thing we had before where they have all the options that we have in the brochure?
Yes, it's very clear.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we will have a motion then to approve the minutes with that, with that change, adding option one to the minutes. And that was reviewed back in September meeting. That was submitted by the, as an option by the support group, and if you remember that discussion. So motion is to approve the minutes as amended by Dwight Miller and have a second motion.
Okay.
Second by Margaret Cunningham, discussion. Eighteen yes. Thank you. Okay, out of eight, uh, excuse me, seven, I'll refer to, or ten, would read that resolution?
Resolution number two thousand eighteen thirty-eight. Resolution in honor and recognition of Joanne Shelton for her devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffey County, Tennessee. Whereas Joanne Shelton serves as librarian and assistance director at Manchester Coffey County Library for thirty-one years. Whereas her tenure of service was characterized by dedication, charity, and outstanding service with people of Coffey County. Be it resolved therefore that the Coffey County Board of Commissioners hereby condemns Joanne Shelton for her outstanding service at Coffey County, Tennessee. Be it other resolved that Joanne Shelton receive a copy of this resolution and a copy be maintained on file as affirmed as directed.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirty-one.
Thank you, Lord Mary. Second by Todd Crockett. Discussion. Eighteen yes, so with that by standing, please. Next, under Act Elections, Formuls, and Confirmations, Act notice. Do I have a motion to approve? Then you got to approve that motion. Make an objection.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the full list of candidates in one vote.
Lord, appreciate that. Do you have a second to the motion to approve all this most likely? Now, second by Ashley Craft. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. And then the reason, I said that Rush said in the seat all this for years, he made the motion to approve the motion. Eighteen yes, thank you. The public building authority, the term of Mr. Stan Hill has expired, and I would recommend that Mr. Hill be reappointed into that position, and to have him, I'll share that with Mr. Stovall, I think he's going to comment on that.
Thanks, Perry. We met last night and talked to three people interested in understanding, two other people that were parties that were interested, and sat with him, talked with him for about, I guess, two-hour session, I guess, two-and-a-half hour session. And we unanimously agreed to bring more Stanton.
Is that a motion to?
Motion, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Tim, for that motion. Do I have a second to the motion? What hurts, hold on.
I'll second that.
Man, second motion, discussion. There being none, let's vote, please.
Yes, Chair recognizes Jackie Hunt.
I would just like to make one comment, comment. Everyone that we talked with last night who is highly qualified, more than qualified.
Very much so.
And we thank them so much for their interest in serving in county government, and I pray that they will continue to be there because we need them, we need them just to, it's for all the things that are coming up, that are waiting. But at this time, we felt like that, that the choice we made was the one for the time that it is.
Thank you, Jackie. Appreciate the comments. We're voting now. Thank you. Eight C, judicial commissioners, law enforcement committee, and talk about the slate of our judicial commissioners, and I would like to make the recommendation that all of them be appointed, and Mr. Bobby Trail, we have three full time judicial commissioners, Bobby Trail, Bob Elman, Paige Bird, and the four part timers, General George Walker, Jill Hatfield, Dawson Chappney, and Tyler Hickerson. So do I have a motion to approve those as submitted? Motion approved by, motion by Tim Stovall, second by Tilda Stovall. That team has done a good job. I appreciate their work. Okay, thank you. Eighteen yes. Okay, eight D, ethics committee. We have a recommended, given all his works to assume the position of Manchester representative to serve on five member committee, so would I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Lord Mary, to have a second. Second by Todd Crockett. Seven, thank you. Okay. Eight E, consolidated communication board. The reason I have that on the agenda for tonight, our guidelines in our committee list says that Coffey County Representatives or the Sheriff and Chairman of Law Enforcement Committee only changes when a new sheriff or a new chairman of the Law Enforcement Committee is elected. And then we have a new sheriff, and it's appropriate that our new sheriff be appointed or elected to that position, so I have to have a motion to, to approve. Set a motion by Jackie Hunt, second by Dwight Miller. There being none, let's vote, please, and I appreciate their, I'm sure if he's with us, who do that? I think I asked him if he's over there. Okay, motion passes. Okay, now eight, I guess that's now eight F, the industrial board. And the recommendation for those positions are Mr. Brent Parsley, Representative Manchester, and Mr. Cam Newton, said he would serve again representing Telomah, and Mr. Bill Golder, President of the Bank there, highly recommended to serve, uh, Mr. Roland Segrows is retiring and leaving the board, and so he'll be coming off, so that'll be two Telomah appointments because of Mr. Segrows resigning from the board, retiring. And then Mr. Alan Davis, who will represent the camp, he was highly recommended by Mr. Bill Holmer, who is serving, has served nineteen and a half years in that role. So, and we reviewed, interviewed Mr. Davis, he seemed like an outstanding appointment, so I'll submit those, and I'll take a motion on that by eight. That, again, Brent Parsley representing Manchester, Cam Newton, Bill Golder, Telomah, and Mr. Alan Davis representing the camp. Motion to approve, uh, Marty Brown, second by Mike Wright. Okay. Let's vote, please. There being none, discussion. And we have a good, strong industrial board. Eighteen yes, thank you. Also, any unfinished business? Ten new business? Resolution twenty eighteen thirty-nine, two thousand nineteen condition, even that. Do I have a motion to approve? Both by Martin Cunningham, second by Todd Crockett. Notice, let's vote, please. And at the January meeting, just to put y'all notice, there'll be a lot more meetings on this in January, so just to share that in back with you. Eighteen yes, thank you. Budget amendments, grant.
You have in your packet several budget amendments that were presented and approved by the Budget and Finance Committee, so will we need a motion to approve?
A motion to approve budget amendments, uh, handling. Okay. Second by, um, I think anyone had their hand up first, so I'll see if they want it. Okay. Yeah, a motion and second. There being none, let's vote, please. Thank you. Moving along, we're in on grant, pre-appetition board for twenty nineteen technology grant for the Coffey County, Manchester, and Linn libraries.
We have two technology grants for both libraries. The magic funds will come from the libraries, individuals who live in town. This was presented through Budget and Finance, and we're supposing to proceed to the budget of the program.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Dwight Miller, second by Tim Stovall. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. I like it when moves, moves like this. Ten D, resolution twenty eighteen dash forty, resolutions to Linn let Coffey County distance restrictions from schools and churches that beer can be sold. Do I have a motion on that? Motion by Margaret Cunningham, is there a second? Discussion, second by Ashley Craft. Discussion.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me background on what source you disadmitted for, what's the purpose of doing this?
Who's on the, who's on the hearing?
Our self-commissioned homework, through the chairman.
I'll recognize that.
The discussion at the time was, going along with what the city of Telomah and the city of Manchester, all their restrictions, we felt that we should coincide with the county perspective because of the entities out of the county that, uh, we can name one or two that are limited, uh, and so we just felt we just fall right along with the municipality and our movement of restrictions.
When did municipal, when did the church?
I understand it's within the last couple of years. I don't have the exact information, but...
I may, I want the last actually, the earlier there than we did in January, and we will have to do it shortly.
Do you have any coordination with schools and churches on this decision?
No, not from the, uh, your...
Any other discussion?
I would like to point out as a member of the, by Mr. Chairman of the Beer Board, that there are several retail establishments in our rural areas, Dollar General specifically, that do sell beer in all the stores that they can. There are two Dollar General stores, both located on Highway fifty-three, that cannot sell beer because of this restriction. They, uh, those two stores would generate tax dollars for the county. Most of the Dollar General stores that can sell the beer, well, the others that are within the city limits, City of Manchester, City of Telomah, uh, do receive the sales taxes that are generated by these sales. Also, it means that way out there, two days, there's a Dollar General store there, there's a, a small church that most people that live in the area say that there's very seldom a congregation there, but that, that building being there in the name of the church prevents that store from selling beer, which means people that are going to buy it are going to buy it, and that means they're going to drive several miles into the city limits, and maybe those people don't really need to be home there, and just to be able to purchase it. So if, there's a lot of practical reasons to do it, and Beer Board is unanimous in the decision to do it, to be lockstep with the other municipalities within this county.
And also I'd like to add, if I may, if, I don't know, if we through, maybe you have a Jericho Elementary School, which have the convenience store that was already there, and then the school was built, so that store has been selling beer for several years. So, um, like Dennis has said, we just felt that there was no need to maintain the restrictions, so we just felt like we would just fall in line with the municipalities, bring the revenue to those small locations. That's why the decision was made. So it's currently that balance sheet.
Any other discussions?
Yes, I would like to add one more, that the, within this county, there have been two random schools built adjacent or across the road from retail establishments that do sell beer. So if it was such a significant negative factor, I would have thought our school board would have said, hey, we can't build a school there, it's right across the road from a beer sale, it's tax issue. So that's, that's just another small logical point.
Another point I think we need to clear as well, is this is, it's not going to be consumed on the property where it's purchased, so if that is a sticking point or a concern as well.
Thank you. Now, ten, we took off ten E. So we're now down to ten F, resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-two, about changes speed limit on Ridney Road to forty miles an hour. Do you have a view that I started in your conferences? Do I have a motion on that? Motion by Missy, second by Ashley Craft. Any discussion? Okay, eighteen yes, thank you. I know, uh, now report of standing committees, any report of any standing committees? Report of any standing committees, have our budget financed, what?
We have approved some amendments that we, I mean, we already voted on, and it had no effect on the budget.
Okay. Last lady?
Uh, we made the fourth Monday, and you want to have any items for the agenda, please let the mayor's office know about those, or contact me. Appreciate it.